Okay, good morning and welcome to the June 27th Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We will start this morning by calling the meeting to order, and I will ask if anyone has a moment of silence. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and so I wanted to take this time to offer our sincere condolences to Denise Lusteloh and family. They lost, she lost her son Mario Tito Mirabella in a car accident last Friday. Denise is well-known in the community for her work. She's on the East Region Town Hall. I know she was on the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. She's a Board of Trustee on the Lake County Office of Ed, and their family is really instrumental in Clear Lake, and so this is a very devastating situation, and so I'd like to just offer our sincere condolences. Yeah.
Does anyone else have one? I do have an obituary that I would like to read. A lot of people, if you've grown up in Kelseyville or the Lakeport area and you've gone to the Ranker Farm stand, you'll know that this passing is the end of an era. So Deepmar Ranker passed away in his home in July, or I'm sorry, June 11th, 2023. He was born in Salem, Ohio, on October 10th, 1932, to Alfred and Kathy Ranker. The family moved to Lake County in 1932, and Deepmar graduated from Kelseyville High School in 1949. Dieter leaves behind his cherished wife, Lois, high school sweethearts. Married for 72 years and still in his wallet is a time-worn junior year photograph of her. They purchased their farm on Argonaut Road in 1953, growing pears and walnuts. In 1990, Dieter became the driving force behind establishing Ranker Farms, selling fruits, vegetables, and flowers he had grown. With his wife and family working alongside him, the farm stand became a popular and beloved local attraction. Many people came by just to talk with the farmer. Dieter is predeceased by his mother and father and sister. He is survived by his wife and children and great-grandson. In addition, he is survived by many nieces and nephews and their extended families. The family would like to thank friends and neighbors who supported them during a difficult time, and they would also like to express their gratitude to the nurses of hospice for their care and guidance. And the Ranker Farm is one of those places where people in our community could be really connected to the locally grown food and the farmers who grow them, and that is such an important thing for those of us that live in the Big Valley area or around the Big Valley area and across the country, is really understanding farmers and how they get that food into the grocery stores and how that food ends up on our plates. So we'll start with this moment of silence and then we'll move on to the pledge. Okay, so this morning, we're going to have a very special pledge led by our K-Corps students. If you'd just like to come up to the front here, and you can start us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda?
There is an extra item. It is on the agenda, but it needs to be approved.
Okay. What's the reason?
The reason is that I received an email late last week from CSAC asking for action from all counties. Went through the process of checking in with CAO Parker and our Social Services Director, Crystal Markitan, and got the approval that that would be something that we should support. So the letter is here, and it's a budget trailer bill, and the budget needs to be closed by June 30th, and so would like to take action before the next posting of the next agenda.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Any public input on this extra, on the extra item? We have one hand up in Zoom. Oh, that's Johanna. Do you have a comment on this?
No, I want to be a part of it.
Oh, okay. Okay, then I will bring it back to the board for action for adding this item to the agenda.
I move to approve the extra item due to its coming to our attention after the posting of the agenda and needing to be taken action on before the next posting of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we'll take that item up a little bit later. So we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. It looks like we have several items that are going to be pulled on my list. 510, 512, 5.33, 5.24, 5.2, 5.15, 5.23, 5.32, 5.34. Does anybody have any items other than that?
Is that nine?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay. Anyone from the public wish to pull one of the consent items? Not seeing anyone in the chambers, checking the Zoom room, no one there, so I will bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.2, 5.10, 5.12, 5.15, 5.20, 5.23, and 5.32, 5.33, and 5.34.
Okay, but you started with 5.2, and that was not, is that something that you want to pull?
I thought you said 5.2.
One, two. Do you want me to read the list?
So I amend that to, with the exception of 5.34, 32, 23, 15, 20, 24, 33, 10, and 12.
Second.
Second, okay. We have a motion.
Make sure he's been checking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The consent passes. So we'll start with our timed items, our 6.1, 9:06 a.m. item, public input. So this is where anyone from the public can come up and they can speak on whatever topic they'd like for three minutes, and so I'm going to open that up now, and it looks like we do have a couple of forms filled out. Yvonne Cox. And so just for our guests, everybody that can come up to the podium and speak, they give their name for the record, and then they have three minutes, but it is a, it is a time to comment. It is, because it's not on our agenda, we can't have a conversation because we haven't let the public know that this is something that we'd be talking about. Go ahead.
Good morning, Board. Yvonne Cox, I was the Director of the Emergency Warming Shelter. On Wednesday, Sunrise brought in a businessman from LA to turn it around, and his questions to me was, do any of these people have PPOs? Okay, on Thursday, he bombed in on my employee meeting, and he was asking, what are our issues? And I said, our issue is administration. There not being money for food, people not getting paid on time, people not getting paid at all, people being shorted. I said, what needs to be done is something with administration, and hopefully you can clean that up. Okay? So me being transparent, I think, got me fired, and I probably intimidated the poor man. We haven't had money for food. I've been paying for the food for the last three months at the tune of $2,000 to $2,400 a month for cleaning supplies and food. Ann Barnes has been saying, can't you feed them commodities? Can't you make mac and cheese and tuna casserole? My reply to that is, no, we need to supply a healthy meal as well as a clean environment. I am appalled and shocked, and so is everybody else. As you know, I've been working with the community for 25 years. The person he put in my place, last job was Dollar General, also a felon, and no experience. I am surprised that we had a hostile takeover, and I think it needs to be addressed. I also believe that there's funds being misappropriated. If you look at line items that were being charged, that people weren't even there, didn't exist. Every time I brought it up, I've been hushed. I tried to bring it up to Scott Abbott, he walked out of the office and didn't want to hear it. Now, if you look at the line item where it says fringe, I believe that fringe is being taken out, put in Sunrise's bank account, and then filtered back as a loan, and then paid back to Sunrise. Check me if I'm wrong. I will be lawyering up. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, Yvonne. Our next public input is from Joan Moss. Do you want to come up, Joan?
I have some handouts for the supervisors, Joanna. And I think I do have one for the administrator. And first of all, I want to thank the Department of Water Resources for following through with my request.
Thank you.
I was handed a list of all my public comments concerning the sustainability Big Basin Program, and it's 891 pages on the website that I couldn't reach and see. They're going to help me read it, and these are all the comments I've made in the last three or four years. I think that there are, there's reason to doubt and question the quality of the super fund site and the names that are being mentioned for methylmercury, but I want to go on to my other comment. I'm reporting about the unidentified aerial phenomena reported by the Epoch Times. It's a paper that comes out every other week. Intelligence officer named David Gruish handed in the last 20 years of documents and pictures to the Congress, and the Congress is dealing with it, and David Gruish is now called a whistleblower. I think it relates to what people have been watching and experiencing and writing about for a long time on Conocti. That's how it relates to us. Thank you. I'm going to work on this, but I wanted to alert you to those two items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Do we have anyone else in the chambers who'd like to give a public comment or in the Zoom We have one hand up, phone 0122. If you would like to unmute and state your name, and you'll have three minutes. What's the code to unmute? Star?
Star 6.
Star 6. If you hit star 6, it will help. Would you like to state your name? We see that you've unmuted, and you've got your talking permitted. We're not able to hear you if you're talking. It seems like, yeah, you've muted again. Okay, try one more time, and then we'll have to move on.
Chair Pisca, if I may, if the individual is calling from a cellphone, they may have the cellphone muted in addition to the star 6 functionality?
My name is Ginger Kite. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Thank you for going through that with me and helping me. I didn't mean to speak during this time. I wanted to speak to an item that was on the consent calendar, and I wasn't able to understand the system in order to get in during that time. Can I, is it too late to ask that a consent item be pulled and put in as a regular business item?
Which item? That item has actually been pulled, so we will be discussing it a little later.
It has been pulled?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, bye.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more public comment, we will close that and move on to our 6.2, item 907 a.m., Pet of the Week from Animal Care and Control.
Hello, my name's Officer Copus with Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today I have brought Littlefoot, he's a six-month-old shepherd mix. He's been through a little bit, and he's been attacked by something, he's been hit by something, and we were not able to touch him when we first got him. Now he is super lovable, super sweet, and wants nothing but attention from everybody. He'd be good in pretty much any home, I believe, and he, he would be very energetic, very good for a active family. If you would like to come see him, he's at 4949 Hellbrush Drive, and here in Lakeport behind the county jail, and our phone number is 707-263-0278.
What's his name again?
His name's Littlefoot.
Littlefoot?
Yeah.
Okay. And how old is he about?
He's about six months old.
Oh, my gosh, he's so cute.
He's really sweet.
I think Joanie found a new animal.
4949 Hellbrush Drive in Lakeport.
I think Littlefoot needs to visit the back row.
Littlefoot, why don't you take a lap back there?
There seems to be interest. I think I also learned he's maybe a little uncomfortable in silence. It's too quiet in here.
So for our visitors that we have today, we like to start our meeting with, with an adoptable animal, and it's just, it's the most delightful way to start a day. Not too long ago, a dog got adopted on the spot.
I'm lost.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you so much for coming, and thanks, Littlefoot. Good luck. Looks like you're well on your way to finding a family. So our next item, our 6.3 item, is 9:10 a.m., Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Kelseyville High School K-Corps graduates, graduating class of 2023. And we have our K-Corps students here, we have, I believe, more than just the graduates. So if all of the students want to come up, we will get to this proclamation. Come on up here. I'm so grateful that you guys came today. I know we had to work a little bit around your graduation schedule. Congratulations to the graduates. I think we need your fearless leaders up here as well. All the way up here, all the way up here, there's plenty of room. Come on up.
You can come this way.
You can scoot over, go ahead. Stand all in front.
Spread out. There we go.
The first five are seniors. These are the seniors. Okay.
All right, the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Recognizing Kelseyville High School K-Corps Graduating Class of 2023. Whereas, Kelseyville Community Organization for Rescue and Public Service, K-Corps, is a two-year program in which the student is selected based on strict criterion and academic abilities, and whereas, the students work directly with the Lake County Sheriff's Department and are on-call for two years, 24 hours a day, and whereas, the members demonstrate an ability to perform with a high degree of excellence and commitment, and whereas, the senior members assist the K-Corps teacher, Mrs. Holt, with training the junior members, and whereas, all members become trained in high-angle rope rescue, map and compass, GPS search techniques, evidence search, and body recovery, and members become a certified first responder. And whereas, these outstanding Kelseyville High School students have self-initiative and dedication that is outstanding. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby recognize the Kelseyville High School K-Corps, who are guided by their focus on the three Ps: prompt, prepared, polite, and strive to achieve academic and personal success for all students, passed and adopted this 27th day of June 2023, and signed by the Chair of the Board. So I want to pass this off to Mrs. Holt, who can talk a little bit about the program and how long it's been going on, and how long you've been part of it.
So I'm Joanie Holt, I'm a teacher at Kelseyville High School. Taryn Larson is beside me, she assists me with the program and is also a teacher at Kelseyville High School. So I took over the program in 2000, the graduating year of 2005, so it's been 19, 20 years, I don't know, you do the math. So I was in K-Corps myself and graduated in 1985. Taryn Larson was also in K-Corps, graduating in 2000. And so, program was started by Dick Arndt, and the first graduating class, it started in '76 with a graduating class of '77, and so it's been going on for 40-plus years. So, yeah, so we, like she said, we're on-call 24/7, and they train every day in the classroom, plus they have weekends that we train as well, and then on-call 24/7, doesn't matter what holiday or birthday or whatever's going on, so we, we're available in case there's a need. So we do a lot of community service as well, and so from canned food drives to parade controls and such, so they're a very dedicated group of students to the program and to each other, which makes it extra special. So, is that there's a very tight bond that becomes with the group and becomes kind of a lifelong group. I just had a girl that was in K-Corps with me that works here at the courthouse that came down and gave me a hug, because we are still in touch after all those years, so, so, yeah.
And it's unique in the nation?
It is unique in the nation. I don't know of another program that is affiliated with a high school, with a high school curriculum. They do use youth in other programs, but it's all just recruiting and training on their own and providing their own gear and that kind of thing, so something that's supported by the high school and actual high school classroom, and then most of the gear is supplied by Kelseyville High School, and so, so it's the only high school program that I'm aware of.
Do you have any of the senior ones about their experiences?
So this is Maddie Madrick, and she was what we call our Squad One leader, which is the top leader in K-Corps this last year.
So through K-Corps, we've had a lot of experience as a, as a whole. We've been on a Pillsbury trip, which is where we learned to repel. It's a weekend trip. Each, my fellow oldies all taught the greenies how to repel. It goes through a lot of trust. A big thing about K-Corps that we've learned is trusting each other, because we get into a lot of situations where you have to trust who you're working with, because it might not be safe. As Squad One leader, it was always my top priority to make sure that my team was safe, so not only did I have to look out for the safety of everyone else, but I had to look out for the safety of my team, which became really important to me, because something happening to our team would be very devastating, so that's always my top priority as Squad One.
Coming to you next.
My name is Manny Acosta. I'm Squad Four leader, which is the second highest squad. At first, I didn't really know what I was getting myself into. I thought we were just going to be out in the wilderness, you know, doing a bunch of stuff. I didn't know that it would be, become this big in my life, but it was fun, and I'm glad I did it, after all.
My name is Holly Huffler. I was a Squad Three assistant, and with K-Corps, I grew up around it. My older brother was in it, and so I want to continue that, and now my little sister's going to be in it.
Hi, I'm Jake Burke. I was Squad Two leader, and I didn't really know what I was getting myself into, but it was, been a really good two years, really helped motivate me for all of my stuff, yeah.
Hi, my name is Ari Fassa. I remember when K-Corps came down to the middle school in like seventh or eighth grade, and I was like, I'm going to do that, so I did, and here we are. Does any of the greenies want to speak? Yeah, here's our new Squad One.
Hi, I'm Elliot Mayo. I'm the incoming Squad One leader. This is a program that my family's been a part of and I've looked up to my whole life, and really, really proud to be a part of this and to help lead and work with my team going to the future and teach a new group these skills that are really useful and incredible to have at our high school and our community.
Thank you. So I, I didn't really know much about this program before I took this position, but right away, my first month of being in office, I had a family member go missing, and K-Corps was out all night in the rain in February, searching for the child, and that was my first experience. And then, and then I realized there was a tradition for the District Five Supervisor to come to the senior awards nights and present a certificate, so it's really been a pleasure to carry on this tradition, and I, I thank all of you for your service, and as I mentioned earlier, I hope this is the beginning of a lifelong of service, and, and there are so many different ways that you can serve your community, even if it's not something that you go into professionally. You know, there's always something you can do on the weekends, or become a coach, or, you know, all of those ways that people have helped you along the way, those are ways that you can give back later in your life. So I've got a proclamation for each of you to take home today, and the greenies, I will see you next year at awards night. You guys can see this on Facebook later, if you want to watch with your parents.
Thank you, Ari.
That is a handshake. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we do it this way?
Yes. Like, should we do it after graduation or before?
Well, we got to see your words.
Yeah.
Well, we'll do both.
Yes.
Okay, and then lastly, Sam takes the picture.
Do we have a chance for comment?
Oh, sorry. Yes, comment.
So I, I just want to make sure that you guys recognize the acknowledgement that the county has for you, not just in your local area of Kelseyville, or not just here in this boardroom. I was spending some time with some of our fire districts and our hospital CEOs, as well as others that are involved in healthcare and first responders, and you guys came up as a potential option and opportunity of who we can look at to help us in some of the issues that we have, and so your service is recognized widely across the county, and it's appreciated that you have stepped up and volunteered to be in these positions and the work that you do, so I just want to make sure you're aware of that, and I want to say thank you.
Anyone else for the board?
Yes, I'll expound on that. Thank you for bringing that up, Bruno, and all of you are from Lake County.
as others that are involved in healthcare and first responders. And you guys came up as a potential option and opportunity of who we can look at to help us in some of the issues that we have. And so your service is recognized widely across the county, and it's appreciated that you have stepped up and volunteered to be in these positions and the work that you do. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that, and I want to say thank you.
Anyone else for the board?
Yes, I'll expound on that. Thank you for bringing that up, Bruno. And all of you are from Lake County, you know, and that's a special thing. And a lot of times when it comes to whether it be law enforcement or first responders, when it comes to EMTs or working in the North Shore Fire or other fire departments, they struggle with keeping people because they come from different areas, get some good experience, and then they leave. A lot of you are from here, so that love for Lake County is already there. And so just encouraging you to take a look at that and whether it be wherever in Lake County, we would love to keep you here. We love the enthusiasm. You all are doing something at a young age where you're gaining all sorts of good values and service. And so that's very important. Thank you for that, and I hope you consider some of the needs here in Lake County and stay and be a great part of it because you've grown in, as a seed, you've grown into good, flourishing, potential people when you get to that level where you know what you want to do. So thanks again.
All right. And?
Rachel over, face this way. You guys for Rachel?
Is there anyone from the public?
Have you guys done this before?
Do we have anyone in Zoom?
Am I supposed to?
I'm glad to open it up for a quick comment.
I feel like I should turn to the left.
I'll just stand.
No. Or face D.
Oh, okay. It's like a V.
Okay.
Joan Ross, I've done a lot of things in my life, and I've been a lifeguard and a substitute. And I just wanted to tell you that my best day of substitute teaching was for K-Cor. Kelseyville High School, my son went there, and I showed up at K-Cor, and I felt like a guest instead of a sub. And you know the difference. So I wrote it up for the record, B, how wonderful it was to be a substitute for K-Cor. Because of your, and this was years ago, five, 10 years ago, but I want to tell you that it was wonderful being a guest instead of a sub. Thank you.
Anyone else in the chambers? Anyone in Zoom? Any hand up? You guys next? Okay, all right, now we're ready.
Okay, so let's try this. How about if you all open up your proclamations?
There you go. Make sure they're all signed.
Just Photoshop the signature in.
Oh, nice. Oh, that looks great. Okay, let me sit for a little closer. Maybe the supervisors could stand?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Thank you. Great. Everybody's fine? Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Enjoy your summer. I know you're on-call, but.
Jessica, is it okay if we go?
Yes.
All right, guys, grab your stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you wait for the people at home?
So how do we want to tackle all these? Do we want to move on to the timed, or the untimed, and then consent?
Sounds like you have a member of the public for one of them if you want to.
Yeah. Do you have any preference?
Well, we could try to start with the Sheriff, Republic Works, and Water Resources. Because I gave them all a hands up.
Okay. So.
And Ms. Jones, is there anything?
Okay, well, I'll just start with this list I have. So we'll start with 5.34, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District. A, approve agreement with Lake Marine Construction for the abatement services of lakebed structures in the amount not to exceed $250,000, and B, authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District to sign the agreement. And so I don't know who pulled this. Was it you?
I pulled the wrong one.
Was this not the one you wanted to pull?
It was for 250. I went to the wrong thing. It meant to be the 5.20, so let's just approve it since 5.20 is already on there. I apologize for that.
Okay. Any public input on this item?
Sorry, Joanna.
Not seeing any hands up, so I will bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement with Lake Marine Construction for the abatement services of lakebed structures in the amount not to exceed $250,000, and B, authorize the Water Resources Director on behalf of the Lake County Watershed Protection District to sign the agreement. And so I don't know who pulled this. Was it you? I pulled the wrong one.
Was this not the one you wanted to pull?
It was for 250. I went to the wrong thing. It meant to be the 5.20, so let's just approve it since 5.20 is already on there. I apologize for that.
Okay. Any public input on this item?
Sorry, Joanna.
Not seeing any hands up, so I will bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement with Lake Marine Construction for the abatement services of lakebed structures in the amount not to exceed $250,000, and authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District to sign the agreement and apologize for taking up time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Both Director DeLeon and Marina are on the Zoom. If you want, we should take those, their two items at this time, which is 5.20 and 5.33.
All right, we'll just do 5.33 because that's where I am. Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the interest, public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, and B, authorize the Water Resources Director on behalf of the Lake County Watershed Protection District to sign and enter into an agreement with Civic Well for Independent Contractor Services through the AmeriCorr Civic Spark Fellowship in the amount of $31,000 for one Civic Spark Fellow to develop an aquatic-invasive species outreach assessment and improvement plan. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Board. Marina Delajanas, Deputy Water Resources Director. And please correct me if this is incorrect, but I believe the item was pulled because there was not an outline that there is also in a resolution that is related to this item that needs to be adopted. So I'm hoping to make that clarification to also include in the items and the subject of, A, as you outlined, Chair Pyska, B, and then also adding a C, adopting the resolution that is included in the Board Packet, authorizing the Lake County Watershed Protection District to sign and enter into an agreement with Civic Well Commission for Independent Contract Services through the AmeriCorr Civic Spark Fellowship in the amount of $31,000 for a single Civic Spark Fellow to conduct an aquatic invasive species outreach assessment and improvement plan. So I would like to make that addition and that clarification in the Board Packet material.
Okay, any comments from the Board?
You just kind of want to check in with County Council on the process of adding something that wasn't necessarily placed within the agenda for preparing the public. I know that the resolution was there, just kind of curious.
And that would be sufficient. And so essentially, it would be an additional request in the board member that was sent to the Board. The resolution is included in the Agenda Packet for consideration.
Good.
Okay, anything from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone. I will bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County's Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, and authorize the Water Resources Director on behalf of the Lake County Watershed Protection District to sign and enter into an agreement with Civic Well for Independent Contractor Services through the AmeriCorr Civic Spark Fellowship in the amount of $31,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
Okay, resolution's been offered.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Yes.
Director Green?
Aye.
And Director Pyska?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 5.33 is also one here.
We're done with that. We just did it.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then I crossed off the wrong one. Okay. Okay. What was the other waters? That's Public Works?
Yes.
Okay. 5.20, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.3 as it is not in the public interest due to the determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit, and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center for consulting services related to hazardous tree removal as part of the Sota Bay Corridor evacuation route grant, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Good morning, Chair Pyska and Board. I appreciate the opportunity to address this. I apologize, we had a typo in our memo. All the references to the County Code Section need to be 2-38.2, Section 3, instead of 38.3. So in the subject and also in the executive summary, those references, again, need to be County Purchasing Code 2-38 Paragraph 3, 2-38.2 Paragraph 3. And finally, in the recommended action, that number in the Lake County Code Section needs to be corrected to 2-38.2 Paragraph 3. Those were the only changes. However, I understand that Supervisor Sabatier had concerns about the item, but from my perspective, all I needed to do was correct those, correct those code section numbers. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Did you have questions?
So the reason I pulled this was the waiving of the bidding. For $250,000, I know that we're using grant funding. I don't know, and I apologize. I know that Director DeLeon and myself kind of had a little back and forth on some emails. I don't know if I was given an answer to if we're forced to do a bidding process for this through the grant that we have or not. I'm going to guess that the answer is no, since I don't remember seeing that response. But that's one of my thoughts is we're getting a grant, I want to make sure, because for $250,000, it's not just a little above $25,000. And how can we be for certain that this is the best bang for our buck? And knowing that we have $40 million more of this type of thing to get accomplished, I'd want to make sure that we set the precedent that we do bidding processes. From what I understand, Clerk is not the one to take trees down. They are doing a different type of process than just a tree removal. They're identifying trees, they're providing grant reporting, so on and so forth. From what I understand, they are forced or are going through a bidding process. I just, you guys know how I feel about the waiving of the bidding, and I'm slightly uncomfortable for $250,000 to not go through a bidding process here. I appreciate Clerk, the work that they do, have great respect for them, but I think transparency and opening things up for competition is always healthy.
Just to clarify, this, this part of the grant is not $250,000. What is this? Because the grant has several different pieces.
I thought that's the amount that was being provided for not to exceed for the work that will be done.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
I thought for tree removal, the segment was $80,000.
No, that was the, the development of the evacuation plan. That, that item.
Oh, okay.
Is $80,000. And then the, the tree removal portion is $247,000. And that is the portion of the project that is covered under today's agreement.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, any other comments from the Board?
And just to clarify, I have an issue with Part A. I do not have an issue with Part B, so if we move forward, I will just go on record as voting no on Part A if that's possible to split the motion, because I do think we need to move forward. I just think there's a different process.
Okay, and Director DeLeon, what's the justification for waiving the formal bidding process one more time?
Well, the justification is that this is a unique skill set. The project requires someone that can coordinate with all the property owners, has connections with the tree removal folks, familiarity with the state grant and the reporting and the overall management of the project. And it was staff's opinion that Clerk, through the work they've been doing over the past year, year and a half, with state grant funds to do that very same project in other locations, made them the best available option in that putting the project out to bid would likely not result in any other bids or firms that are local and have those same skill sets. And so that was our justification for recommending that it met 38.2 Paragraph 3.
Yeah, and additionally, this work is in collaboration with the Conocdy Fire Safe Council, who helped write the grant and has been doing this type of work already with Clerk. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Supervisor Sabatier's concerns are well-stated. It would be nice to have a little more info on the four corners of the grant and whether there are any implied or expressed conditions for competitive bidding in that. But I'm looking at the staff report, in particular, the last two sentences of the second bullet point in the executive summary. It is unlike, there's a lot of other local firms out there performing similar services. Clerk is acting basically as a grant administrator, not performing work. So to the extent they can round up local crews and all that, and to the extent there may be an internal process that they do some cost control. But long story short, a competitive consultant selection is likely to receive little to no interest, so there isn't really any benefit to going out to bid on this, given the information we have today. So I appreciate your concern, Supervisor Sabatier. In this instance, there's a need for speed, and I have great confidence Clerk is going to be a good grant administrator and is going to bring in the best crews they can and give us the best bang for the buck that they can within, within the four corners of that grant.
Okay, any other Board comment? Anyone from the public then? I am not seeing any hands up, and so we'll bring it back to the Board for action. Vice Chair Simon? Oh, sorry, did you have a comment?
No, I was going to motion, and one mission.
Go ahead.
So I'll motion to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.3 as it not, it is not in the public interest.
Got to make the amendment there.
Oh.
It would be under, under the correction.
Oh.
2-38.2 Sub 3.
Okay.
And then the rest.
238.
Point 2.
Point 2. Paragraph 3. Paragraph 3, "As it is not in the public interest due to the determination that competitive bidding would produce no economic benefit."
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the agreement between the Lake, the County of Lake and Clear Lake Environmental Research Center for consulting services related to hazardous tree removal as part of the Sota Bay Corridor evacuation route grant project and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement. Is there, okay.
All in favor? I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to 5.15.
Yes, Rainy Grafton is available.
Approve out-of-state travel for health services staff Leila Romero and Jennifer Thorup to attend the N-A-C-C-H-O 360 conference in Denver, Colorado from July 9th to July 14th, 2023.
Do you want me to start since I pulled it?
Oh, yes, this is, go ahead.
So I have absolutely zero issues with this. This is a good conference, but I did want to make it more transparent to the public as there was not an amount of what the cost of that out-of-town travel is.
the cost of that out-of-town travel is. And I thought that was an important part for everybody to know. And so in my communication with Rainey, thank you very much for the correspondence yesterday, I believe it's $4,900 for the cost of the travel to the conference. And I just wanted to make that public.
I did receive a correction on that after we spoke. The total cost was $5,100.
Okay.
Apologies.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the Board? Anyone in the public? Not seeing any. Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the out-of-state travel for health services staff Leila Romero and Jennifer Thorup to attend the NACC H0360 conference in Denver, Colorado, from July 9th through 14th, 2023, for the amount not to exceed $5,100.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll go down to 5.12? Approve Board of Supervisors' minutes for June 6, 2023, and June 13, 2023. Is this, did you pull this?
Yes.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, I was looking at the 613, BOs minutes, and there was a presentation regarding, on 6.7, regarding the algae. And I just wanted to make sure that it said Supervisor Crandall and Sabatier presented not just Supervisor Sabatier. I wanted to make sure that the minutes were appropriate for who the presenters were on that item.
Okay. Any other Board comment? Anyone from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Board of Supervisors' minutes for June 6 and June 13, 2023.
Second.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Scott Horning is on Zoom to present or to answer any questions regarding 5.32. And we also have Lieutenant Bingham will be available soon, also on Zoom.
Okay. And we have, I was going to go do 510, and we've got Elise here.
Okay.
Approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Crisis Support Services of Alameda County for after-hours crisis support services in the amount of $88,200 for fiscal year 2023-24, and authorize the Board Chair to sign. I'm not sure, who pulled this one? You did? Okay.
And so on the agreement on Exhibit A for scope of services, as I was going through that, I reached Section 4.2 for the days off. And it says, "On holidays as follows for fiscal year 2223." That needs to be changed to 2324. And I'm just going to read through what the changes should be, because these are all holidays from a prior year. It should be, if we're agreeing on a contract for the following year, to make sure those dates are correct. So it'll be Tuesday, July 4, 2023, Tuesday, September 5, 2023, Tuesday, October 10, 2023, Saturday, November 11, 2023, Friday, November 24, 2023, Saturday, November 25, 2023, Saturday, December 23, 2023, Tuesday, December 26, 2023, Tuesday, December, sorry, Wednesday, December 27, 2023, Thursday, December 28, 2023, Friday, December 29, 2023, Tuesday, January 2, 2024, Tuesday, January 16, 2024, Tuesday, February 20, 2024. And I think they were trying to trick me, because it's a leap year, Wednesday, May 29, 2024. And that should be the changes that I was looking to make, unless there are other changes from the Board.
Any other comments from the Board? Any comments from Behavioral Health?
No, thank you for that catch, Supervisor, appreciate it.
Any public comment? Let me just check the Zoom room, and then bring it back. Okay, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just want to make sure in October, because we have a mismatch between the state and the county. So Monday, October 10 is that holiday for us.
That's their holiday for the Alameda Crisis Hotline, not ours. It's when they are not going to be providing the service. So whether it matches what we have or not, I don't know that we have an ability to change their days off and on.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Crisis Support Services of Alameda County for after-hours crisis support services in the amount of $88,200 for fiscal year 2324, and authorize the Board Chair to sign, with amendments as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approve Amendment Number 1, Agreement with Preyus SIS LLC for Management Consulting, Compliance, and Reconciliation Services for Inmate Telephones, Inmate Tablets, and Ancillary Communication Services, and authorize the Sheriff and Chairperson to sign. Supervisor Sabatier, did you pull this?
And so this one's real simple. It's just a quick typo. I was hoping we can just turn a 1 into a 0, but County Council told me it would be cleaner to bring it up in public session. On Section 2, 2A, under compensation reporting, it says, "For the period beginning February 11, 2014, and ending April 31." If we could change that to April 30, since there is no April 31. And then that is the only change to make to that contract, or that amendment.
Okay. Any other comments from the Board on this item? Any from the public? No one in Zoom. Okay, then I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number 1, Agreement with Preyus SIS LLC for Management Consulting, Compliance, and Reconciliation Services for Inmate Telephones, Inmate Tablets, and Ancillary Communication Services, and authorize the Sheriff and the Chairperson to sign as amended.
I'll second with the request that we get a pronunciation someday of this company. Thank you.
Preyus Sis?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move on to 5.24. Approve Agreement, A, Approve Agreement between Lake County Sheriff's Department and U.S. Forest Service for 2023 Annual Operating and Financial Plan in the amount of $20,000 for Pillsbury Patrol, and B, Approve Agreement between the Lake County Sheriff's Department and U.S. Forest Service for 2023 Annual Operating and Financial Plan in the amount of $10,000 for Controlled Substance Operations, and C, Authorize the Sheriff and the Chair to sign. And was this pulled by Sheriff's Department?
Wasn't pulled by-
Okay. Go ahead, Lieutenant Bingham.
It was not pulled by us.
Oh, okay.
We would ask, though, that we, in the memorandum, we had signed by the Chair, along with the Sheriff. We just asked you approve it, that the Sheriff could sign the amendment to the contract. Again, Forest Service is a five-year contract. We're already in contract with them. This is just a modification of that contract for an additional reimbursable funds for the law enforcement services we provide on U.S. Forest Service property.
I didn't pull it.
Okay. Let me see if they pulled it. Okay, was this, did Madam Chair?
Yes, we pulled this. We notified Mary Beth that we would prefer that the Chair also sign this amendment.
Okay. Any comments from the Board?
So we're looking to change C to authorize the Sheriff and the Chair to, so we're not changing anything?
That is correct. We're just adding a signatory line for the Chair to sign.
Oh, there's no signatory line?
Yes.
Okay.
We can do that, absolutely. It would just carry over to the next meeting, and we can make the modification and have that.
Can we?
Oh, yeah. So the signatory line can be added pursuant to the, today, pursuant to the, if the Board approves for both the Sheriff and the Board Chair, the Chair of the Board to sign.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Bring it back to the Board for action.
Super quick clarification, that would be on page 19 of the agreement where the two signature lines are currently. You're just adding there. Thank you. It's a lot of pages.
Did see one signature field on the first page of that agenda packet, where it would only have Lake County Sheriff's Signature Field.
I saw another field on page 19, so. Actually, on page 1, that looks like a U.S. Forest Service signature.
It would be under Section 11 of Signature.
Oh, I see, I see. I was looking at 12A. But if you look at page 19, that page could be easily modified.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Take it this is a template format application, and so adding our own signature sheet and making sure that it's like Exhibit A, or whatever it is, that needs to be as an addendum, is what we should ask, an addendum signature for the Chair.
When I spoke to Mary Beth, she was just going to add a signature line on a separate sheet to this application.
Yeah. It's simpler that way, since this is a template. I don't know that we should mess with a state form.
Correct. That was my understanding. This is a U.S. Forest Service-
Or a federal form.
Modification, or federal modification grant. We did create a separate Exhibit A with the Board's signature-
Okay.
-for this. We just did not originally submit it with the contract, which we can definitely do, and then have the Board sign it at that point, if that's what the Board wants to do.
I'm good with that.
So if I see the recommended action is worded correctly, to the point you're raising, you want the Chair to sign as well. So if I just make the motion as recommended, that would cover this, right? There's nothing further. I move to approve the agreement between the Lake County Sheriff's Department and the U.S. Forest Service for 2023 Annual Operating and Financial Plan in the amount of $20,000 for Pillsbury Patrol, and approve the agreement between the Lake County Sheriff's Department and U.S. Forest Service for 2023 Annual Operating and Financial Plan in the amount of $10,000 for Controlled Substance Operations, and authorize the Sheriff and the Chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So next.
Last one.
Last one, 532. Did you pull this one?
Yeah.
Okay. 5.32, Sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, Adopt Resolution Approving an Exception to Lake County Sewer Code Section 205, Allowing APN 012-026-140, Located at 9586 South State Highway 29 in Lower Lake, to Remain on a Private Septic System, and pulled by Supervisor Sabatier.
So I looked up the address, and I get that this is an old building. However, it's being renovated for new commercial activity. And I, knowing that it's so close to Seagull Creek in that area, I would like for us to reduce the amount of septic tanks that are in the vicinity of a water body. And so I do not agree with the waiver for this property. If it was residential, I'd have a different take on it. But as a commercial business, I think that they need to do what is the right thing, which is to connect to our sewer system and ensure that there's no impacts to the neighboring environment.
Any other comments from the Board?
I appreciate at least the initial thought. I'd be open to hearing from special districts. If the objection is to the cost of hooking up to the sewer, but we're also claiming that the private septic system is in need of major repairs, our Board would need some comparison of costs to even make an intelligent decision as to which way to go on this. But if the old septic is gone and needs a big chunk of money, we need to know how big that chunk of money is before we can weigh whether to grant an exemption for the, what's probably a bigger chunk of money, to connect this to septic. But I appreciate Supervisor Sabatier pulling this.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Board members. I'm not opposed to that process. They meet all the environmental health required setbacks to body of water and/or well. Environmental Health leaves that they have room to do the expansion and/or repair to the system. So as far as that goes, we'd still be in favor of allowing the exemption. But if we want to go and have the developer get some quotes for what the repair of the septic system is, that sounds reasonable to me.
Sounds reasonable to me, too.
Okay.
We'll just make a comment, though, you know, just to follow through on the unreasonable burden. All the costs in there are quite extensive as far as doing that. If they meet the setbacks and other things, when we see the cost, obviously, I think we need to take that into consideration. So I would think repairing the septic system is going to be a much, much less burden on the business as it's moving forward. So I appreciate this coming back with those costs, or an estimate of those costs.
Do we have anybody in public comment? We've got two hands up. First hand is phone 0122, if you want to unmute. Say your name, and you'll have three minutes. Are you able to unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. My name is Ginger Kite. I live in Lower Lake. The property that you guys are looking at or talking about now is located very near to Seagull Creek, which feeds into Cache Creek. I'm concerned that allowing it to stay on septic is a risk of sewage contamination to both of those creeks. I have concerns about the environmental impact. The building is older, was built pre-1950s, as I understand it. And I think that it's important that we protect our environment and our creeks here in Lower Lake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have another hand up. Sufian Hamoda, you want to unmute?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Sufian Hamoda, I am one of the property owners there. I just want to thank you for taking the time to review it today. And I did just want to note a couple of things. So this property does have the existing septic. And in March of 2022, we actually had the septic system inspected by Environmental Health and passed. We were going through the permitting process for the business, and it was only in 2023, earlier this year, that we had submitted for the building permits. We got sign-offs from Air Quality, Fire, School District. And when we got to Environmental Health, that is when we were required for another inspection. That inspection actually took place after the massive rain and snow events. So the only problem with the septic system was it was oversaturated. Now, going, I mean, working with Lake County Pumpers locally, they were able to say that they can easily install or expand the septic system that is currently there. All the infrastructure's there. Yes, we are redoing the building within the same footprint. But that septic system was fully functioning and approved by Environmental Health in 2022. Again, we just had that follow-up inspection after, again, the massive, massive rain event. The distance, as mentioned, from the septic to the creek is over 250 feet. So there's quite a bit of distance there. We're definitely willing to provide, I know we went through it right now, but we're willing to provide the quotes. Lake County Pumpers- Um, Lake County Pumpers, again, has been working with us. It will be, uh, astronomically less of a burden, um, to just upgrade the system again, uh, which we had already done in, uh, 2022, that reinspection. So, um, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Does anybody have any questions for him?
Not, not for him, uh, but for special districts. I'm, uh, kind of flash reading the, uh, the sewer ordinance, and I was looking for the, uh, the exception that's available here. Can you, can you give me the exact code site?
It says Section two oh five.
Yeah, two oh five and two oh four.
Do we have any other public input on this item? I'm not seeing any in the chambers and no more hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Swatier.
And, and I think that one of the things mentioned by the, uh, I don't know if it's the property owner or the project manager, um, it is, it fits right into my thoughts. Um, in 2015, we had an unprecedented situation, and it's happened, unfortunately, year after year after year. Um, and we're still worried about it happening again in the future. Uh, the idea of, um, massive rainstorms is a part of the same issue that we deal with when it comes to fires. And so this seems like it may, the issue that he's dealing with currently with his septic is an issue that most likely will be reoccurring as weather continues to become more and more severe. Um, which is why I think for longevity and especially for commercial purposes, um, we need to make sure that it's done appropriately, um, and not patched.
Supervisor Green?
I would just like to point out that Section two oh four provides that the board may, on its own motion, find by reason of special circumstances. I don't see a process where any particular landowner may move for relief based on special circumstances. If we do this for this applicant, I can think any number of future applicants who would say, hey, it's gonna be a lot cheaper for me to rehab my sewer, uh, my septic than to go on sewer. So apart from the general affordability concerns raised by this applicant, I'm looking at the exact text of two oh four, and absence some metric of what special circumstances would apply in this case or in any future case that could be caused by any precedent that this would do, I don't know that a cost comparison in and of itself is gonna be sufficient to create those special circumstances. And, uh, but I'm open to continuing that discussion at a later date.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, you know, and my, you know, my comments were so that we have the full story to have the conversation as we're moving forward. I clearly hear the environmental concerns as we're attempting to, uh, do other projects around the county to get as many folks on the septic system as possible, so understanding that conversation. But, you know, would also like to have the, the full picture all the way around, uh, before we make the final decision.
And, and I'm good with that. I'm good with moving forward with more information.
Yep.
Okay. So consensus to bring this back?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright. We have gone through all the consent items.
Cleared your list.
Cleared the list. Okay, well, why don't we take up the extra item? Supervisor Swatier?
Okay. Uh, so the extra item is a consideration of a letter of opposition to AB and SB one twenty. It is a human services trailer bill, uh, regarding, uh, the specifics, because the bill is, I don't even know if it's fifty pages, eighty pages, uh, but it's specifically to the IHSS penalties, uh, that are being applied. Um, they are, um, I, I, I agree with the language that CSAC provided for us, uh, which is, it puts us at a loss as to why are we even going to negotiate? If we're gonna get penalized, if we do a good faith effort to negotiate and we can't come to an agreement, that is not, uh, something that I would support at all. And the penalty is a decrease of ten percent of our IHSS funding, uh, that we would receive. And if not, um, if not resolved, an automatic dollar increase on the wages, um, which for some counties, possibly ourselves, is more than that ten percent that we would lose. Um, so just the fact that it puts us at a complete loss in being able to negotiate, where if there, the other side is unhappy with the board's offer, uh, that automatically we get penalized rather than continuing the conversation and having a good faith effort between both parties. Um, it is, uh, the, uh, letter itself has been printed. It is upfront for anybody to, uh, grab and pick up. I don't know if the board would like me to read the letter to make sure to be as transparent as possible to the public before making any, uh, decision. Uh, but that is the, um, brief summary that I can provide. I do not know if, uh, Director Marketan is available today.
I, I, this is Crystal Marketan, Director for Social Services. Um, I am on the meeting.
And if she has anything further to add to what I just stated?
I don't. Uh, my reading of it is exactly as you describe, and so, um, I am in favor of the board, um, signing, um, the opposition to this. Signing a letter of opposition.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, appreciate this coming forward. Uh, this is complicated stuff. Budget rider bills are complicated. Uh, I'll just take it at face value that this was kind of a last-minute tweak, but there's a lot of goodness in this bill, uh, that probably needs to move forward, so. And I haven't had the opportunity to go through all the pages. My only constructive suggestion would be if we can identify which section of the Health and Safety Code or government code this amendment applies to, that would add a certain amount of specificity. We're not opposed to the whole bill, it sounds like, uh, but we're opposed to this one, uh, one kind of last-minute addition, which is termed, at least in one of the latest analyses, the IHSS Collective Bargaining County Penalty. So I think that's called out in rough terms in this letter, but I think if we're to be specific and, and kind of cite to what the legislature's been tracking, uh, what they're calling it is an IHSS Collective Bargaining County Penalty, and, uh, this, uh, opposition letter would cite to whatever code section, uh, would implement that.
So this is a form letter from CSAC?
This is a letter from CSAC and RCRC, uh, as well as there were other agencies, um. Let me get to my emails.
And it does call out, it says the provision in the Human Services Trailer Bill.
Uh, there's a lot of provisions in there, so.
So I, I'm okay with the form letter as written. Um, but I will open it up to the public. Do you have anyone in the chambers? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, oh, I, we do have a hand up. Crystal Marketan, Director Marketan?
I just, I, I wanted to, um, add that, uh, the California Welfare Directors Association is also, um, cited as, um, not being in favor of this last-minute change. Um, and it does, um, it, it, it's a heavy burden for counties, particularly a county the size of, of Lake, and the size, uh, with the size of IHSS case law that we have. And so, um, you know, we will negotiate when our contract is expired, um, when we're in good faith. I don't think that this will help anything.
Supervisor Swatier?
And so if I may add, so we have the California State of, Association of Counties, CSAC. We have the California Association of Public Authorities, CAPA. Uh, it was just stated that there's County Welfare Directors Association of California, Urban Counties of California, and the Rural Counties Representatives of California are all opposed to this specific additional penalty. There is already a penalty for not, uh, negotiating and for, uh, not having a good faith effort. Uh, but this strengthens and adds, uh, barriers that are absolutely gonna keep us on our heels rather than being able to continue to have good conversation, uh, with our, uh, IHSS union.
Okay, ready for action?
So I just had a question, Supervisor Swatier. I, I heard you mention something earlier, or, um, I didn't even know what you answered it. Sorry. Don't worry about it. Yeah. So, just for transparency to you, the recommended action.
So the recommended action, I, I was hoping that would be changed before we got to that today.
Oh, no, it's, it is changed. I just sent it to you.
Oh, it needs, oh.
Yeah. We can display it.
Sorry about the algae bloom. Come, I, I, I copy from other previous memos, and that was a really, uh, embarrassing mistake. Uh, the recommended action would be to approve the letter as written. Uh, I would like to make sure we send it to Senator McGuire, Governor Newsom, and I don't know if there's any additional, um, folks that we wanna send that to. I, I know that I'm looking at our CAO to make sure that, uh, that those are the appropriate ones to send it to. It has been sent to a committee. Uh, I'm gonna be honest, it's the B and FR. I'm gonna guess that's the Budget and Finance something Committee, uh, before it goes back to the Senate. It has already been approved by the Assembly. And yes, these were last-minute changes, uh, not very transparent, no conversation about adding those changes, hence the letter that's been, uh, drafted for us, uh, to support them being taken off.
Madam Chair, we'll, we'll provide or add any additional, uh, people, um, to send this to if it's appropriate. We just don't know that quite yet at this time, and we will do so. Okay, thank you.
Because one of them that I was hoping we'd send it to is the, uh, Chair of that committee as well.
Right.
Second. Did you make a motion?
I, I was, I wasn't sure if we were ready for.
Yeah, we're ready for action.
Uh, so I move to approve the, uh, letter opposing the, uh, Human Services, uh, penalties for IHSS, um, as drafted with the addition of appropriate, uh, recipients, uh, and placed in a more formal, um, format.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Alright, now we will get to our untimed items. Yes, we can take a five-minute break. We'll come back at ten thirty-one. Okay, we are going to... We ready? We're gonna tackle our untimed items. We will, um, start with seven point two, consideration of requesting Armstrong Consultant to provide a Lamson Field Airport Expansion Conceptual Plan. Supervisor Swatier?
Thank you very much. Um, this is a topic, uh, that I've been kind of going back and forth with Director Deleon. I wanna say for the last four years, um, trying to see what the Airport Land Use Committee, uh, because I've been on that for a while, but we haven't had the chance to meet. There's been, uh, just, that there's, there's a lot going on in that department. Um, and so we just have not been able to meet that. Maybe it hasn't been a, a reason to meet. Land use is very specific. Uh, but I know that we have limitations on our airport. Um, when we were, uh, going through the process, sorry to go kind of around full circle, but, um, when we were going through the process, uh, for the Maha Project, I remember speaking with the, uh, uh, project manager that they were renting a hangar in Sacramento and that they really would love to have something more local. Um, then I, I know that there's a couple of businesses that are, uh, not able to use it because of the inability for larger planes to access it. And then in my conversations with our fire districts and hospitals about, uh, transport for patients, it was brought up on the vast difference between a helicopter ride and a fixed wing flight. Uh, the cost is almost thirty percent, if not even lower than that, for the fixed wing flight. Um, and so that was, uh, something of interest. And so I had a conversation with, uh, Director Deleon. I knew that we had our Armstrong consultant, uh, that had been, uh, already acquired by the county, and looked to see, well, what is their part that they can play to help us understand what the plan is. We don't have a plan. We have, uh, infrastructure money for local airports that is gonna become available. Um, and we, without a plan, there's no way we're gonna be able to access those infrastructure funds for the airports, and those are soon to be released. Um, there's other grant opportunities as well. So what's in front here is just, are we interested in asking Armstrong to do a plan? If the answer is yes, uh, then Director Deleon would come back with a supplemental service agreement that requests specifically for, uh, for Armstrong Consultant to look at, how, what would it take to have a airport where you can land using instruments? Where now you can land at night, you could land in bad weather, and that way that can help, um, potentially create access to CAL FIRE, create access to fixed wing, uh, medical flights, uh, and other larger planes as well to be able to access that. Um, and so just wanted to bring this to the board. I, I do want to, uh, provide an apology to Supervisor Green. I slipped and said something to Chair Piska about airports, and so I had already compartmentalized myself to not being able to speak to you. But this is a airport that serves the entire county, uh, not just a specific district. And again, no action is being taken today other than, uh, consensus and direction to staff, uh, the details. Um, uh, Armstrong Consultant did provide a potential cost summary and a potential scope, uh, for, uh, doing this. Uh, that doesn't mean that what we say yes to today is exactly what's there. That, that will be in the details of the supplemental service agreement when that comes back to us.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I just obviously support the idea, you know, using the Lamson, but my request would be if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it and really look for the infrastructure, uh, you, you know, we've been limited at the airport. I've heard many conversations here at the board level through the community talking about it. If we're gonna do one, I would rather be the entire county. Maybe the airport we build isn't in, at Lamson. Maybe the airport we need to build is in a different part of the county or a different opportunity. I know line of sight, other things. I'm not a pilot, but these are just some of the concerns, um, you know, that have been brought up. CAL FIRE, a great one, as you said, whether helicopter or plane. Helicopters can't fly in some of the inclement weather. Uh, the fixed wings can land, uh, if we have the opportunity for that. So my, my only consideration would be if we're gonna do it, looking for infrastructure dollars, that we, we really look at the entire county. Is there an option here for an airport in Lake County? I think that's a big-time infrastructure, future growth need for us. Uh, we got our neighbors in Sonoma County expanding and other things, but that's still a forty-five-minute drive. There are plenty of folks from Lake County that drive to Santa Rosa or San Francisco or Sacramento to get out, you know, to get out of here. But that little commute time, I, I, that, that would be my only request in support of this. But I really think if we're spending the dollars, we really look at the opportunities that may lay out there, uh, that haven't been fully vetted with all these infrastructure dollars. So that would be it, but I do support this.
I, I appreciate the, uh, addition. I'm not sure what that does to the overall cost summary, but why pigeonhole, why pigeonhole ourselves to one specific area? Because maybe it'll cost fifty million dollars to do that expansion versus whatever else cheaper to do it somewhere else. So I, I don't know what that looks like, but I, I think that's a good concept to, uh, ask them to not only look at what we have, but where else it could be.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I would, you know, I, I, you know, I see the, uh, scope of work as it's presented. Um, and if we were kind of, and, and my question to you, Director Deleon, yesterday was like, what, you know, what do we know about in terms of a master plan? Are we talking about just, uh, filling in the blanks for an airport that continues to have, needs in, in its current iteration that may be eligible for infrastructure dollars, uh, to Supervisor Simon's point? Uh, a needs analysis, uh, that may go outside, just being focused on Lamson may be appropriate. Uh, fixed wing is cheaper, but if we're just fixed winging to an airport and they're doing grand transport, uh, ground transport, uh, IFT, if you will, to another facility, there, those costs have to be, uh, looked at. So the scope of work is fine, is fine as far as it goes, but this company has a lot of expertise, a lot, uh, you know, airport master plans is within their realm of expertise. I think doing needs assessments is probably within their realm of expertise. So although this is presented as kind of an infrastructure-y engineering proposal, uh, I do like taking a broader look at things. Um, I, I don't know how much we can get out of that current site. You know, when they, when they put it there, uh, they knew that it had some inherent limitations as far as takeoffs and landings, but for the size of the facility as it was envisioned at the time, it's probably fine. So one question would be, how do we update it? How do we make sure it's, uh, continues to be appropriate for those uses? Um, but times change and our needs change. I'm not a big fan of the build it and they will come in terms of air tanker bases or helicopters or even fixed-wing medical aircraft. So as part of the needs assessment, maybe a referral to Emergency Medical Care Committee would be appropriate so they can at least be contacted during the scope of work that ultimately is approved here. So I guess my request would be, I love this as far as it goes. I agree with Supervisor Simon. It could go farther into kind of a needs assessment for aviation for our community as a whole. Probably the bulk of that will end up at Lamson Field, but there may be opportunities for other things we can look at. So thank you for bringing this forward. No harm, no foul about getting looped out at that. But my suggestions would be at some appropriate time, let's get our first responders involved and get their understanding about the needs and the benefits that we could do by expanding services, commuter aircraft, commutes to the Bay Area and stuff like that. Supervisor Simon mentioned that's also an important aspect of this. So there is a master plan, a multi-oldie master plan at the airport. And like many master plans of that age, you know, it covers what it covers, but it doesn't cover what we have here. So this is good, this is kind of an infrastructure-based. I would say kind of a master plan update might be a more fruitful use of that money. And I think hopefully our infrastructure dollars would cover that kind of advanced planning, if you will, before we get into the weeds about what specific projects we need to engineer and where.
Director Deleon, do you have anything to add?
Good morning, Scott Deleon, Public Works Director. No, I'm hearing and looking forward to some consensus and some direction. I do think that they are two separate, the two things you've brought up here are two separate proposals. And I would actually ask Armstrong to separate them. One to be, look at Lamson in basically the format that they've provided. And it's schematic in nature, it's a planning tool. It's something that you could use to say, okay, here are the impacts, ramifications, and is it suitable to do this work? Because with the additional length of the runway, you need to be considering the width of clear space and other things. And so it's a pretty complicated analysis. I would actually ask them to do that and in addition, provide a proposal to do a countywide needs assessment or a countywide assessment of potential locations that could be considered. They are a very good and competent planning and engineering firm for airports, and I'm confident that they could do both of the projects that you've mentioned this morning.
Okay, that sounds good, and then we'll have an ideal cost when it comes back.
And I'm good at looking at that as two separate things as well. One of the reasons also to bring this is, to me, I see our airport's limitations as being a hinder to our potential economic development that the airport can provide for the entire county. Whether that's being able to fly out with products and use that as a shipping ground, or whether that's to bring in materials or bring in stuff. So I just, I think there's a lot of parts that comes together after the fact, but if we can't expand it, if we can't make it instrument approach airport, then at that point, yeah, we do need to look at other places and whatnot. So two different things I'm in favor of.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this? We're not seeing anybody in the Zoom room? All right, so I think we have direction for you. Consensus, yes? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, 7.3, consideration of District and Board of Supervisors Newsletter Options. And this is from Admin, Matthew.
Good morning, Board. Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As always, it's a privilege to address your Board this morning. During your budget hearings of Thursday, June 15, the concept of preparing and distributing regular district-specific or Board of Supervisors newsletters was raised. And before we go any further, I do want to emphasize the County Administrative Office stands ready to assist your Board in distributing key messages of public interest. And we look forward to partnering and supporting your Board and supporting county residences' information needs in accordance with whatever your Board's direction is. On June 15, multiple members of your Board voiced support for development of newsletters by district. And Board members do regularly provide reports in Town Hall meetings and/or in collaboration with members of city councils. So having a written document that can be readily shared in those fora may enhance those updates and also help ensure consistency of messaging. There was some discussion as well regarding whether each supervisor would prepare their own newsletter or support would be provided by staff. Staff review at a minimum to perform minor edits and ensure messaging on major county projects is consistent across districts seems reasonable as a minimum. If it pleases, your Board staff could also provide a greater level of support in terms of preparing language, provided that members of your Board are able to relay what information should be included. And that would likely take the form of bullet points with essential information. And also if you could capture images that are in your districts that would otherwise require travel time, that would be a help in terms of limiting the staff time that it would take. And also in reflecting on your Board's previous discussion, it seems valuable to draw out a few other considerations. And first, it's my expectation, and I'm confident it will be your Board's expectation as well, that these newsletters particularly if prepared by county staff or supported by county staff in their development will focus on projects and progress and other essential updates on what is happening in your districts. Each of you are active in the life of your districts, and so you'll very likely have involvement in some of the projects that are being reported on. But the focus of the newsletters clearly would be meeting the information needs of your constituents. And examples of that could include updates on park developments and other major projects that are relevant to your district specifically. And some of those items would reasonably require coordination with department heads or in some cases even community-based organizations that may be partnering with county agencies on that work. So considering where that workload is following is important. And also it could include notices of upcoming events like your Town Hall meetings that are of broad community interest and/or events where public input is critical. Could also include links to newly available or timely resources specific to the communities that you serve, and things like safety reminders, such as the fact possession and use of fireworks, including those labeled "safe" and "sane", are illegal in all areas of Lake County outside of the city limits of Lakeport. And so messages like that, of course, would be, in addition to the important preparedness messaging that's shared by the County Office of Emergency Services and other community groups on a regular basis. And as a second area of consideration, I'm cognizant that three of our supervisors represent areas that include cities that prepare their own messaging. So the communication needs across districts may be different as a result of those considerations. And a third area of category is distribution. During your Board's previous discussion earlier this month, electronic distribution seemed to be what was envisioned by email lists. Late yesterday, we unfortunately ruled out the possibility that this could be done using the existing county website content management platform. While automated emails are available in some areas like requests for proposals and bids, for example, that functionality is not available across all areas of our website. However, as members of your Board have mentioned, there are a number of products that are available that can provide that functionality. As you would expect, in addition to popular platforms, there are tools that are from entities that specifically serve local governments, and some of those are embedded in broader suites of software tools. So we may, in fact, want to go with a more standard consumer product. There are options starting around $20 a month for 500 recipients. Those particular plans, we'd have to get a little bit more detail. They may not be fully appropriate to your Board's needs. And plans that can accommodate distribution to all of your constituents would certainly cost more. But given that it'll be an opt-in e-newsletter, presumably up to even, you know, 1,500 recipients, for example, would be a pretty significant number to have opt-in. So available tools can definitely be investigated further and we can determine what's most appropriate in collaboration with IT staff and others as appropriate, if that's your Board's direction today. In the meantime, it is possible, of course, to gather email addresses either using a Google form or asking people to email us to be added to a list. So, and you'll have seen a newsletter template was attached to this item for your Board's discussion. The emphasis in creating this particular template was just solely on flexibility to create a form that was very easy to modify in light of the discussion that your Board previously had. Wanted to make sure that it was something that could be easily edited, that pictures could be easily replaced without necessarily having to be moved, that sort of thing. So this is really just a very rough version, but intended to maximize what you're able to do with it, to modify it. And so definitely appreciate your Board's previous discussion, and we'll look forward to any further input and direction that you have today and your consensus building and direction.
Thank you, Matthew. This is something that I brought up during budget hearings because it's, I've just been noticing a disconnect when I present at meetings or talk with people and they just don't have any idea of what the work is that's happening in the board chambers and at all these meetings and with our different departments. And so I think this is a great way to communicate with people who don't have time to attend a lot of meetings or are just focused on their work and they prefer to have an email update. I've managed a lot of email newsletters and listservs over the years, so I've found this to be a really effective way to communicate. But I do think we can't really move forward in this conversation until we acknowledge our staffing crunch. And so I just wanted to give Cao Parker a moment to talk about that.
Yes, with the announcement of our most recent retirements and the fact that our ACAO is still assisting behavioral health, we're a little pressed right now as far as, and we have limited capacity. So my thought was that maybe we could do a slow rollout. Maybe we'll just start with, you know, something from the chair, you know. And then as we build and we retain, hire and retain additional individuals that can do this work on a regular basis, then we can roll it out to go beyond to the districts, if that is something the Board would consider. Because at the time when we were talking about this, we weren't there as far as retirements, and now we are.
Right, and there's time to also research what's the best product, you know, how we're going to be engaging and collecting those lists. So I'm grateful that we had this conversation so quickly. But I do know that, you know, we might have to slow our roll a little bit until we get fully staffed. And so once we are fully staffed, who would you envision handling this or which position?
Yeah, as long as we keep this to, you know, just the facts and not any real complex policy analysis. I think a management analyst could actually do this. So I did it as an intern, so I'm thinking that a management analyst-
You did it as an intern?
Yes.
At a different place?
Yep.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, Glendale, Arizona.
Okay, so I'll open it up for comments. Supervisor Green?
When you were interning, did you use commercially available software as a service or did you use some proprietary government thing?
Well, back then, that wasn't really an option.
Okay.
You excelled, didn't you?
I just want to comment, I do like the template quite a bit. This is in a one-page PDF. Most e-newsletters go out. You can do long form because you're actually scrolling down in a computer format. And then the platform itself creates the ability to either print it out as a PDF or share the link as a webpage. So there's a lot of goodness in there. So I really like this first look. I know one thing that can be used to save work is to stage in the software program kind of a master template. And actually, you wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel. So maybe the project's in progress, maybe that could be left to staff or something like that. And then you could either have the Chair with the main message or the individual supervisors with the main message. But if we didn't have to reinvent the content wheel for all of this, it would reduce any amount of editing time or staging time in the software. And then we could just really focus on that key message. So that'd be one way to kind of lower the amount of staff time. It's just kind of massage this, get it into kind of a proposed template within the program and see how staff kind of takes some first looks at that. But I appreciate, you guys are stretched thin right now, but I appreciate the work done so far and I look forward to hearing more at some appropriate time.
Supervisor Spatier?
So I'll be somewhat repeating what I said last time when this was brought up. I still feel the same way. I think the way we communicate with the public is our job. If we had funding such as other counties where we have our own personal supervisor staff, then that wouldn't be a problem for us to work with our staff. But the admin office, in my opinion, is not our staff. I don't mind the idea of a board letter. We've done that in the past. I think that represents all of us and the actions that we have decided by consensus. But individual district newsletters is, in my opinion, our job, not anyone else's job. So I would prefer that we spend time on moving forward on all the projects we're asking staff to get accomplished versus checking for typos and grammatical errors and context of the stuff that we provide them.
Yeah, I'm in support too of rolling it out slow, obviously, if we're going to move forward a thing. But from the Chair, it was a full board, I definitely supported that. I thought it had some good traction when it got started earlier on in a different little, you know, iteration. You know, after our board meetings, I think is what we were doing. After the meeting, we got the message out there, you know, and sent it out to the community. So definitely in favor of that. Yeah, I, at one point in the previous career here, setting up for six days, I talked about the staff and being able to have that. We do have neighboring counties, everything, you can go meet with them. They got a scheduler, they got a staffer, and, you know, we got an iPad and a cellphone. And so moving along those lines, we do have a lot of work to do, a lot of infrastructure dollars, broadband, roads, all these other things, and a million other things that are happening. Although we're talking about, I'd like the admin office to focus on that. And, you know, if another conversation comes back, I think I made my point clear where I like it as a board, you know, a solid front, getting that message out there.
I'm good with moving it out slowly. Like we've talked about, I understand the situation. And I do like the collective approach initially, you know. Once we get into a position of having the resources for assistance, I think it would be a good idea. For example, there's a couple of Town Halls that I won't be able to attend. Something like this, you know, would be official, they can read it off while I'm not there or whatever the case may be, because I usually give a report to them. And, you know, I still do it anyhow. Like I said before, I'm gonna do it regardless of if we do, if we ask-
Staff to help.
Or not, but yeah, I support, so.
Well, it's an equity issue too, because not everybody can attend the Town Halls and get the update. It's, you know, and sometimes there's under five people at my Town Hall, and so only the people that are in attendance get the update. And, you know, that's unfortunate, because there's a lot of people that, you know, need to understand all the things that are happening, like you were mentioning, the broadband projects and all of, and sometimes they're district-specific. So that's why I think it's important to have that a little bit drilled down. I feel like if it, we can start with the board package, but it might be a little long and it might be a little easier to do short bites for each district.
You're right too, because there sometimes will be limited, you know, participation in the Town Halls. And so, like you said, having this available for people to read that don't attend. And it's commonly because of work, and they're 5:30 or 6:00. I know one has a 4:00 PM. Some can't even come to these, you know. And so I think it supports, you know, specific people that can't come to Town Halls or to some of these meetings. So in both aspects, I'm in support. Yeah, it's difficult to get participation at times, you know. And it's not because they don't want to, they just can't.
Yeah.
Kids games, things like that.
Yeah, and it is our job to be communicating with our constituents, but if you have a city pushing everything out constantly, you know, that they're doing a really good job in a district like yours, in a district where you're all unincorporated, that's, we're lacking, and it is an inequity. So I can see how you wouldn't find it useful or helpful with your district, but, you know, to do my job and to get this information out to the constituents, this is something that I think could be really helpful. And it's, again, it's not a narrative coming from me. It's collecting all the projects that are in the works that people need to know and be aware about, and then getting that- that assistance from admin, so that they're, so the message is coming out consistently across all the districts.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
That cough was not supposed to happen in that manner. Coffee. I just want to add that we need to be cognizant that every board member is unique in the way that they interact with staff and the way that this will create time needs from staff, it will not be equal in how it will be applied. I just want to make sure that, because without some sort of policy that says, how many times can you ask for one of these newsletters? How many, how, like, they're, I just see this as being used to get the attention that that's your job to get, and I get it that there's a city, but...
Yeah. I'm not disagreeing that there should be a policy around this and, you know, like, it's a monthly newsletter, it shouldn't be turning into a weekly or a daily thing. Obviously, that would, that would really impact staff in ways that we're not anticipating. But on the other hand, we have to do a better job of getting information out, we just do. And I like having the record too of the saved newsletter, it's ongoing for people to access when they can. We can have printed versions here in the admin office for people to pick up. Just being the rural community that we are and being so spread out, you know, these are, there's information that we need to push out, especially during fire season. I mean, fire season is when we want to be able to make sure that everybody is signed up for alerts, everybody is aware of things that are changing and happening.
And again, those are more global county things than district things, in my opinion.
Well, I, they can be, they can be. But there's also, you know, big, for example, like a big fuels project that's happening with, when we just talked about the Soda Bay Corridor project that's happening, that's grant-funded, that's in collaboration with other organizations, and that would be a very good thing to let people know that's happening in their district. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I think I can get where both of you land. So one way to minimize the impact on staff is, although it makes sense on so many levels, so at least some eyes on before it goes out, and it can be cringe-worthy if there's not. To your point, it's our content, it's our communication with the district, and these tools are pretty powerful. I get the idea of a monthly and just, you know, updating, but one reason I like the idea of this is, in addition to whatever monthly content or periodic content we send out, this is one more tool in the toolbox during emergencies, you know, for people who aren't on Zone Haven, don't get nicksels. Email can be the last refuge and just the limited work I'm doing in my own district with my advisory board, I'm doing kind of a cobbled-together email blast through that, and I'm constantly saying, please do not reply all to these email addresses. And it's constant, they do it anyway, you can't do it. One way, the software is very powerful, is it helps immunize the county from mishandling. People are opting in their addresses, if they opt out, that's handled, it's seamless. And even in a fire event, there are options with the, within these programs where you're not sending out like really spiffy templates, you can actually send out just a text email as an alert, like, hey, you know, I just heard this, I'm flashing my district in Scotts Valley, something's going on, like that fire nobody heard about, you know, last week, trying to track down the smoke plume. So we don't want to like add to the noise, but to the extent we are an official channel and we can and should communicate in little microbursts, this is such a valuable tool. And so there's going to be some staff time setting up those tools, but if we can just not set it and forget it, but set it, get a policy for what we're pushing and when, very powerful. And I think that kind of ameliorates some of your concerns. Yeah, we should be doing the content, that's on us, we're communicating with our constituents. And there's happy news, there's good news, there's not time-sensitive news about projects, but there are occasions where we do want to reach out in a very meaningful and fast manner, and this is a great tool to have. So don't want to burden people with all that, but I see multiple ways to use this tool, one for the kind of general newsletter function, but also for targeted communications during times of crisis.
I think you helped to prove my point.
I think you spoke directly to his concerns there, and I disagree with how this should be used. I think that this should be an admin tool that admin manages and sends out in collaboration with the supervisor, and there's strict policy around that, it's not something that we're just firing off left and right. So I think, I'll open it up to the public. Oh, you had one more comment, sorry.
So I think the way I'm hoping that this will go, and I know there's going to be a policy, but not hoping, I already know, like, I will be doing the basic homework on this, I'll be meeting with the director or whoever to get the information to put into this, and basically staff would just be looking at it and saying, oh, no, yes, no, yes, whatever the case may be. And it's really just more like a review. I don't think it would take too much. I wouldn't be asking staff to go and collect my information, I would be doing that. I mean, that's just what I assume, because I already kind of tried to do that anyhow. So do it as much as I can without burdening staff, so.
Correct. And then running it, you know, making sure that everything that we've collected is consistent with what's happening in the department heads and everybody is in agreement. So, yep, I agree with you Supervisor Crandall. I will open it up to the public, if we have anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this. Or anyone in the Zoom room, not seeing anybody. Okay, bringing it back. So this is direction for staff. It sounds like in addition to bringing this back, having a policy in place when it does come back. And whenever you feel like it's time. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, 7.3, consideration of district and Board of Supervisors newsletter options. I'm sorry, I just...
I'm having a day, don't they?
Okay, sorry. 7.3, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Hilltop Recovery Services for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services in the amount of $547,500 for fiscal year 2023-24, and authorize the board chair to sign. And we have with us Elise Jones. Do you want to come up?
Oh, sure.
Got two items anyways.
Yeah, I might as well sit down.
Good morning, your board, thank you. My name is Elise Jones, Deputy Director of Administration. This contract represents an extension of our Drug Medi-Cal Plan. Lake County Behavioral Health Services is the administrator of the Drug Medi-Cal Plan, and this contract is, allows us the provision of residential services for men and women. And we are proud and happy to continue to partner with Hilltop Recovery and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Spatia.
So again, appreciate the back and forth on this one during our emails yesterday. So there's five beds that are being held, and I didn't ask this question yesterday. Why not 10? Aren't we getting reimbursed? I mean...
No.
We're not getting reimbursed for this?
No, unless we are able to get reimbursement, Medicaid reimbursement, if the people for this level of treatment are under the age of 21, under the early and periodic screening and testing benefit. But unfortunately, ASAM Level 3.1 and 3.2 and 3.5 services are not reimbursable unless we are in ODS.
Are not?
Correct. So they are reimbursable under the Organized Delivery System, which we, as you know, are presently not a part of, although we aim to be very soon.
So we said we wanted to be in the ODS, then we canceled being in the ODS?
Correct. No, we do want to be in ODS, we have a problem with joining the regional model.
Okay. Because I just, this is one of those things that we obviously have a major issue in our county, and I can't, I will approve this, because obviously we need the beds, but I can't not bring up the conversation of, how do we do, how do we do more? I know some sheriffs that live in, I don't know if it's Yolo County or Sacramento County, not specifically known where they live, but they bring people to Hilltop from their area, and I'm wondering why, I love the fact that they're open for other people, but our people need help here in Hilltop. How do we, can we open beds for people under the age of 21 so that we can get reimbursed and get more of that? How do we do that?
So I would like to draw your attention to the fact that we have increased the number of beds that we've purchased from Hilltop from three to four to five, and a strategic use of funding in order to keep that going. Hilltop is presently Drug Medi-Cal certified and contracts with partnership through the regional model, so they do take beneficiaries from regional model counties. Certainly, we can continue to explore expanding, and the department does agree that expanded residential treatment services are definitely needed. So we are doing our best to expand, and our hope is that when we do, when we do join ODS here shortly, that will provide additional expansion of funding to support that need.
The ODS thing is frustrating. No.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the public? Not seeing any hands up, so I'll bring it back.
Madam Chair, I will, let me pull this up, sorry. Yeah, it wants to do that right now. Okay, there we go. So I motion to approve agreement between County of Lake and Hilltop Recovery Services for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services in the amount of $547,500 for FY 2023 and 2024, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.5, consideration of amendment number one to the agreement between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc. for the Lake County RAP Program Foster Care Program and Intensive Services Foster Care Program for Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $3,600,000 for fiscal year 2022, 2023, 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Thank you, Elise Jones, Deputy Director of Administration. This contract represents significant changes brought forth by CalAim payment reform and is an expansion of services through the contracted providers specifically for youth, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Green?
Just apologize for my ignorance, I would have assumed a foster care RAP funding that come through DSS versus BH, but maybe that's my ignorance. Comes through both?
Yeah, separate, there's different monies that fund RAP, so this funds the Specialty Mental Health Services provision component, which is the provision of intensive case coordination, KDA services. And so those are Medi-Cal billable, whereas some other funding comes through Title IV-E that's funneled through the Department of Social Services. So there are multiple funding streams that support our foster youth.
Like ISFC stuff?
Correct.
Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, just to kind of check in, obviously, some of these changes are due to the CalAim, and when we originally signed this, there was no budget for '23-'24. Do we know 100% that we will receive funds for '24-'25? I know that we have it as a three-year because it's part of the MHSA program, or at least typically that's the three years, maybe I'm mistaken on that, but we don't have anything for '24-'25, but yet it's a contract that goes through '24-'25. So it's kind of weird to me to not budget any funds but yet be contracted to go through a year that we don't have any funds. Do we know that there's a promise that there will be funds, or is that every year we hope and surprise, there it is?
No, so these are not related to Mental Health Services Act programs or services, these are Specialty Mental Health Services that are funded through the Medicaid program. And so therefore, they are fully, they're reimbursable, and it reflects a negotiation of rates based on the new rate setting across the state of California, so it had to reflect the new rates. The reason that we've remained silent on the last year of the agreement is because we would prefer to wait and have solid projections rather than have to come back and do an additional amendment. And so we will have to amend this contract to reflect projections for '24-'25. In the case of Medicaid reimbursable services, the contract maximum and funding is really a placeholder, it depends on how many services can be provided, which we hope is the max, the most amount possible. So we're really hoping to expand services, particularly in South Lake County Clear Lake in partnership with Redwood Community Services and specifically to people under the age of 21.
Supervisor Green?
And to that end, just to follow up on ISFC, so this would be for SDRTPs and that sort of thing, we don't have any of those services in county at this point, right?
Quick question, you're speaking in acronyms that I don't understand.
Short, it used to be group homes back in the day, now they're...
Short-term residential treatment facilities.
...programs.
And the first one?
ISFC is Intensive Services Foster Care Program. So these are foster care kids with very special needs, but to my knowledge, most of those special needs are, have to be met out of county because we don't have any in-county capacity. Is that still the state of that?
We do not have any in-county residential placements such as an RSTRTP for youth, correct? No, we don't. They go out of county and we pay that bill.
Is there anything with this in the contract? I don't know, probably not, I mix the apples and oranges, but, you know, at some point we have to incentivize creation of in-county services. And I know we can't just waive money and make it happen, but my goodness, that'd be something to look for when we look for additional funding. It's nice we can provide services, it would be even nicer if we could provide them closer to home.
I agree, and I would say that the department is in active conversations with Redwood Community Services as well as Anchor Health Management, both out of Mendocino County, to see how we can partner to bring some of those services in county.
Okay, we'll open this up for public. Not seeing anyone in the chambers or in Zoom, so I'll bring it back for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amendment number one to the agreement between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc. for the Lake County RAP Program Foster Care Program and Intensive Services Foster Care Program for Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $3.6 million for fiscal year '22-'23, '23-'24, '24-'25, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and we will move on to 7.6, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $400,000 for fiscal year '23-'24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Yes, thank you. We have partnered with North Valley Behavioral Health for several years, particularly to access their capacity to provide inpatient competency restoration services for people deemed incompetent to stay in trial, and I'm happy to entertain or answer any questions from the board regarding this service.
Questions from the board? Okay, anyone from the public? Not seeing any hands, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consideration of agreement between County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $400,000 for FY 2023 and '24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you so much, Elise. 7.7, consideration of the following Advisory Board appointments, IHSS, Public Authority Advisory Committee, Mental Health Board. So this is from the clerk of the board. I have some, we have a lot of appointments to make here. So Supervisor Green, did you have something to add?
Yeah, thank you, I've been working with staff. I've been working with staff. This is one of our committees that termed out, and we're trying to repopulate, so this is going to be a partial appointment. We won't have a full standing committee after this. Based on the categories of the committee and based on the applications, I believe we can move forward with three appointments today. And those would be for a provider rep, Vicky Osborne, and for two senior community representatives, Jackie Jordan and Bonnie Blumenthal. And we're going to have to continue to do outreach to our disabled consumers and senior consumers of these services. That seems to be the harder lift to populate this committee, but we think we can get the second provider seat filled and appoint both of the senior citizen, senior community representatives today with those recommended appointments, which have been reviewed by Department of Social Services.
So is, we, has, is Vicky, has she been, has she been serving in this role? Or I'm just wondering how, because looking at the applications, there's not a lot to them, and so I was curious on how we were going to figure out which provider. I mean, I think Vicky's great, but there are some other people I know on this list, too. So I'm just wondering how you came up with that recommendation.
I just reached out to staff, and if staff is on the Zoom, they can certainly speak to
Okay.
the needs of the committee and how they might reach those recommendations, but I concur with their recommendations.
All right, so it looks like we have Director Markatan on, if you want to speak to this.
Yes, I would like to introduce Amy Shemansky. She's the deputy director, deputy directors for adult services, and also Mary O'Brien, who is in charge of the registry, which, provider registry, which is, you know, the booth that is represented here, but I will let you give the clarification around the recommendations.
Good morning. Mary and I went over the list together. I agree that there are a lot of good applications here. We chose to move forward with Vicky as someone who is a, she's been on the registry for a long time. She is a very competent provider who we are able to refer out often, and we just felt like she would be a good fit. She has not been on the board in the past, and she just seemed like a, like a good candidate. Unfortunately, we only have one provider seat open at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Swatier?
So I'm sure we all know, and I've heard from Seva Giomelli, and I just think it's important to have people who are, who exhibit advocacy to be on this board, and I know that Seva is motivated to advocate, and I think that she would be a great asset to the board.
Yeah, I do think Seva's great, too. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I, I'm glad you said that. I agree with that. She was basically my second choice behind Louisa, but if that's what, I would go with that.
I know that we have active board members that are, or active union members that are also on the list. Seva is a great advocate for our union and attends all of our, our union presentations and those kind of things. We were hoping, being we only had one seat, to fill the seat with someone who was not as active on the other side of things, because again, we do have the union representation, and then we have the advisory committee representation, and we were hoping to spread this out a little bit, but I recognize what you guys are saying.
So there, so they have representation as well already, or?
Not on this one.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Do we have a preference down here, either of you?
I lost. I honestly lost track of what names you were bouncing around.
Vice Chair Simon, do you have a recommendation?
Obviously, Seva Giomelli is fine, but you know, ultimately, the department had chosen the individual. I'm fine with going with the recommendation.
Supervisor Swatier?
I'm really glad that Supervisor Crandall brought Louisa Acosta up, and I'm looking at conversations that I was involved with yesterday, and definitely want to make sure that we have diversity within our group. And I think that's something that we need to recognize and remember when we're putting together these, these boards, that it's not just a name, it's also representation of your experience of life and things like that. So I'm willing to look at Louisa Acosta as that individual representing the providers, just because I think it's important that we continue on that purpose. Sorry to make it more confusing by changing my mind, but
Lisa was another person that I was, that I know well, too. So I, I understand staff's recommendation, but I think we have great applicants. I will turn it over to the public right now and see if we've got anyone here who wishes to speak on this. Don't see anyone in the chambers, and I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I have a question.
Yes.
Supervisor Green, you said three are ready to move forward, and I see that we could potentially move forward with four. There's vacancies in provider, so that's one. There's two vacancies for disabled. We have one, so that's potentially two, if Barbara Arvizo is appointed. And then we have two vacancies in senior community representatives, and we have two senior community representatives. Is there a reason why three were chosen instead of four?
I apologize. I haven't vetted all of these applications. I see your reference to Ms. Arvizo self-identifying as a disabled community member, so that if an appointment was made, although I'm looking at the sheet, and this is the weird thing. So once we get a committee, we're going to take another deep dive into the bylaws. So we have a, two disabled consumer spots and one disabled community representative. She, her application says caregiver, so not necessarily consumer. So she could be appropriate for the disabled community representative spot if, in fact, her statement is disabled community member. So the, the way the word representative is used here, and I haven't reviewed the bylaws recently, but it's almost like if you were representative of a, an organization that served disabled people or something like that. So there's some wiggle room in what a disabled community representative might be, but I would surmise that Ms. Arvizo could be a good appointment for that, so we may be able to do four today.
So Director Markatan, you did send me an email, and I think it was your recommendation that we do, we appoint the four, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So the one that we just have to decide on is the provider, and then appoint the other three.
And I think at this moment, I'm, I'm in favor of Louisa Acosta.
Is that a motion?
For the provider?
For the provider, sure. If we're done with public comment, I would like to move
I'm sorry, county council?
Just for clarification, your board may make the appointment for the whole entity, in this case IHSS, with the names in one motion per entity.
Thank you for that. I move to approve Louisa Acosta as the provider, Barbara Arvizo as a disabled community representative, and Bonnie Blumenthal and Jackie Jordan as the senior community representatives to the in-home support services Public Authority Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry.
I just had a question, and what if there's a disagreement on the provider, or then what happens to her?
Then the motion will fail.
Yeah.
So then, would it be ideal to do a separate, or?
It can be done, yes. So if there is some further discussion to be made for a particular spot in the, in this, in this committee, then that discussion can be taken place separately with the motion all in reference to the same entity. So it would be, it can be taken in two separate motions.
I seconded for the first one, but yeah, I just wanted to
We'll see. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, no worries.
Okay.
Okay, so the mental health board appointment, we have one vacancy, and we have one applicant, Bonnie Blumenthal, general membership. We have comments from the board? Okay, I'll open up for the public. Anyone in the public? I'm not seeing anyone in the Zoom room. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move to, move to approve Bonnie Blumenthal for appointment to Lake County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mind if I just make a quick statement?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to all those that provided an application to go above and beyond and be a part of this group. Obviously, we need more people, but I just want to make sure and express my gratitude for the applicants.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will go to our last open session item, which is 7.1, Supervisors' Weekly Calendar and Travel Reports. And who is ready to go first?
I'll go for it.
Go for it.
So I want to express one of the meetings that I had last week, which stands out in my mind. I met with, it was an exciting meeting with our community colleges, our high schools, hospitals, and fire districts. There is very enthusiastic conversation to expand the EMT program that Mendocino College is currently offering. By the way, just a little plug, if you are interested in becoming an EMT tech, please check out Mendocino College. They do have their class. It is starting this fall. It is a seven-unit class, and after you finish that class, you pass your state exam, and you can ride on an ambulance. And it's a good paying job, and we need those out there. As well, you can have a position somewhere in the hospital, most likely in the ER room. They're also looking for EMTs. So it was a great conversation to look at ways to expand and create the workforce. The conversation will continue. Really appreciated every aspect of our community that could be involved in that, saying, let's do more, let's do better, and if that can help solve some of the problems that we've had with our transportation, all the better. Let's get that workforce going. So that was one of the highlights. I did leave town and got to enjoy some vacation time with my family and appreciate being back home and looking forward to the Fourth of July. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the final copy of, or the final design for the skate park. I'm very excited about what the skate park looks like. I'm going to have to go on a fundraising mission for that to get accomplished, but I'm, I'm very enthusiastic that we're going to get that done in one phase, and I can't wait to bring it back to the board before asking for the fund from my discretionary cannabis funds to be utilized, because I really think that they've done a fabulous job. I have a, kind of an overlap of a meeting. I have an audit committee meeting, which I need to take part in, because I think I'm the only one of the board that's on the audit committee. At the same time, there's a first five, and I just want to check in with Supervisor Green. You'll be there. Perfect, thank you so much. And then always try to listen into our fire protection district so that I can know what they're up to. On the 29th, I don't have much set up other than starting off with Judge's Breakfast and then a meeting for the Lake Pillsbury Potter Valley Project with Supervisor Crandall, seeing how that conversation continues. I got to miss a little bit of that when I was gone, but looking forward to continuing. Then I will be joining on Friday an AB 52 tribal consultation workshop on Friday. That's all that I have at this moment in time. Saturday will be the Red Bud Parade for the Fourth of July that the Lakeshore Lions puts together every single year. Appreciate all their work. The streets get filled up, a lot of food, a lot of crafts and fair stuff. The carnival is in town. I saw them setting up. I do enjoy the festivities around Lake County for the Fourth of July, but need to highlight, we do have a lot of fuels out there. If you haven't knocked down your weeds, please do so, and as you enjoy the holiday weekend, the long weekend, because some might go all the way through Tuesday, please be safe and practice caution if enjoying sane fireworks or firecrackers in the Lakeport city limits. Just be safe, please. Let's see, we don't meet next week, so let's see what I got going. Got to prepare for everything regarding PEG, as we'll be meeting on the 10th. I have a meeting with the Middle Creek Project Development on that Tuesday, which we can make since we don't have a board meeting, and I know we're working on trying to move that meeting. I know there was an email regarding that. Oh, shoot, yeah, so that won't happen. Let me ignore that. Hope Rising Meetings and Clear Lake City Council Meeting. I got a pretty wide-open calendar right now up until the 11th, and I believe that there'll be three of us here on the 11th.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make sure to be here.
Oh, I'll go. Yeah, there we go. So this week, tomorrow I have a NACO class. Thursday, Congressman Thompson will be talking with us, Potter Valley Project situation. Lake County Recreation JPA, that's from four to five, and I'm going to try my best to get over to Cloke, but I've been missing that lately. That's at 5:30. Friday, Clover Creek Hitch Habitat Restoration Project Cooperative Agreement, and I think that has to do with the Caltrans working with the county on that situation to remove sediment from Middle Creek, and so that's exciting, right? Next week, I just went to Wednesday, because I don't know what it looks like Monday and Tuesday, so NACO leadership on Wednesday. Thursday, I have an ad hoc committee meeting, so we can prepare our letter and recommendations to the Farm Ranch and Rural Communities Federal Advisory Committee meeting, which I'll be traveling to on the 9th of July, and attending that annual meeting, or there's two, so it's, I guess, biannual. The last one was in January. I wasn't able to go to that, so we'll be going to this one. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for the meeting, and then traveling back Friday. So with that, there's going to be a couple meetings that I will miss, and that is the Wednesday 9th, let's see. Sorry, there it is. So there is the water resources regarding Lake Pillsbury, and that's with Director Nemeth. So I don't, if you'll be here, will you be able to? Yeah, I'll do my best. It's at 8:00 AM. I think it'll be 9:00 where I'm at, which means I'll be in the meeting.
Did you say the 9th?
Yes.
That's a Sunday.
Oh, wait, no, let me see here. You sure? Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, the 12th, 12th.
Yeah, I got
Yeah. Okay, and then I know we talked about the RCRC meeting. You already had something, so I let them know I'll be on this, this, so that we might not just have representation that day, and that's fine. And then the next day is the Clean Water Program Quarterly Meeting. Would you be able to attend? That's, you're part of that, so yeah.
On my calendar, yes.
Okay, and so if you cover those, I'll be good to go for that. I also will do my best to get the SURF meeting covered in some instance when it comes to Zoom, because I know we struggled with that last month. It was a situation, because that will be on the 9th, or yeah, is that the 9th of July, Monday? Yeah. Right, and so then, that's it. I'll be back the next week for the Tuesday. I think it's the 18th meeting. I'm looking at different numbers and getting them mixed up, sorry. But, no, I was right, 18th.
All right.
I just want to add something real quick. Yesterday, the Visioning Forum was in the city of Clear Lake at City Hall. I'm thankful for staff and the supervisors that have been involved in that visioning forum process. The conversation is intimate, it's sensitive, it's necessary. I really enjoyed last night's conversation, and I hope that we figure out positive ways to continue those conversations rather than allow positive ways to continue those conversations rather than allow it to dissipate and fade away. I think those conversations are, should always be reoccurring, and so I just wanted to express my gratitude for all those that put it together. I know Matthew Rothstein worked really hard. Nicole Anderson, I believe is her last name, did a fabulous job of facilitating, just appreciative of the work that was done for that, so thank you.
Okay, who's ready down here?
I don't have a whole lot, except I was going to be gone on the 11th. I can't go now, no.
Nope.
Dang it. Go big or go home. I too appreciate very much the dialogue that went on at the Community Visioning Forum. I too want to thank Matthew Rothstein, the presenters, the sign language interpreters, the Spanish interpreters. Small but scrappy crowd, and there was some good work done, and Nicole reached out to the Zoomies, and it was just fascinating to see how that discussion was facilitated. I think there were some good takeaways. I think we'll get a good report back to the board on that, and I agree with Supervisor Spatier, this is just a starting point, not the ending point. Yesterday, I was able to take a tour with the City of Lakeport Utilities people, Paul Harris, City Manager Ingram, and Councilmember Froyo, just take a look at a lot of the infrastructure, which I never got a tour when I was on council, but I got a good look at their sewer lift stations and their wastewater treatment plant, some of the south Main Street infrastructure, and it was just a really, a really good dialogue and a really good reminder just how tightly the county and the cities are bound together in terms of the services we provide. I do have first five commissioned tomorrow, and apparently I'm not going anywhere on the 11th, and that's about all I have to report. Thank you.
So just starting with last week, had a couple of very interesting meetings. I did attend a meeting with our new economic development deputy, Ben Rickman, and also CBG. They reached out, they've been reaching out to the tribes, talk about broadband expansion, what everybody's working on. I think that's very good to be, not only be inclusive with the tribal nations, the cities, to really look at what we're doing here in Lake County for the long-term picture, to look at that. So I enjoyed that meeting, kind of sharing what we're working on. I know they're going to be reaching out to the other tribal nations, and I hope we just continue that dialogue, not only here in Lake County, but all across the state, because it's so important for the underserved communities, you know, as we move forward, and that includes all of our communities. So also attended the RRA Strategic Planning Session. You know, I thought that was a very good working session as we're moving forward in the evolving the RRA. Obviously, RRA has been heavy on the fire prevention, but the RRA, as it was created, is to look at all hazards in the county and to continue that growth. So coming out with a mission statement, we'll be doing some stuff at the board in August, looking at also doing some, which is in our bylaws, that we can also appoint some alternates, so we make sure that we have a quorum, a quorum challenge for all of our stuff. Yeah, we met, yeah, I'll go into that. But that was a strategic planning. I thought it was very well. It was held at the city of Lakeport. We had a good attendance, and like I said, we had a great facilitator, Laura, and I'm going to mess her name up, Sam, 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 Laura Samuel, who kind of facilitated it, and I thought there was some really good discussion. Great thing about a strategic planning session, you look at, you know, we did the SWOT analysis, but you know, you're always trying to look in the positive direction, but there was some really good stuff with just communication and other things that came out, and people, you know, really laid it all on the table and said, hey, how are we going to move forward here in a positive direction? And I really appreciated everybody's comments. So that was a great planning session, and more to follow as we're coming back. We had the RRA meeting yesterday, you know, here in the courthouse, you know, come to the significant things is appointing some alternates for each seat. Also, we'll be moving the meetings around the county. The next meeting will be at Station 60 in Middletown. We've had a commitment, city of Lakeport, city of Clear Lake, you know, I think we picked six areas, you know, around the county that we can move to. Cobb Area Water was there, so there's going to be some, you know, strategic planning as we're moving the meetings around, not only just to talk about what we're doing, but to look at some of the projects, and also to really continue to expand the scope. So appreciate everybody's participation and really looking at some of the newsletters, communications, just some of the stuff we were talking about, how to get out there and tell our story. We're doing a lot of great work in Lake County. We just got to get it out there and say, this is what we're focusing on. So excited about that. At the board meeting today, and then tomorrow have, I don't think we're doing agenda review on Wednesday, right? Because we don't have, we don't have...
Not this coming week.
Following Wednesday. So Lake County Benefits Committee meets tomorrow afternoon. I'm the appointee. I'll be at that meeting. Don't have much on Thursday as far as the calendar goes. 30th, back with CEO, still on. I'd like to have our meeting on Friday if you're available.
This Friday?
Yeah.
I will make myself available.
Excellent, thank you. And then rolling into the holiday weekend, already covered by Supervisor Spatier of the Red Bud Parade. Wednesday would be the agenda review, and then another meeting with CEO on the 7th, and then back here for the meeting on the 11th, where I'll be chairing the meeting. And then just want to talk about, you know, all the celebrations gone on. Middletown Days went very well for our Middletown community. You know, give them a double shout-out, because I forgot to mention it last time, and I had to go back and mention it. So I thought everything went well, weather was perfect, good turnout. I got some pictures, too, I'll provide, you know, not a bunch, but got some pictures I think can provide with some of that stuff, but good community events. You know, I just think it's so important, too, as we're moving forward. I talked about the broadband stuff. You know, I know we're doing a lot of good work to be in a position to do that. There's a lot of CPUC hearings and, you know, webinars that are happening, coming up, as we got everybody on that. I think CBG will be attending those, or somebody, but the infrastructure dollars are going to be there. The middle mile needs to be completed, I think, and last mile by 2026, so really important that we're moving forward with these conversations as, you know, we're looking at the future of Lake County. So that's what I have at this point. Don't think I missed anything, but that's all.
Okay, we've had many fires. I won't even say several, because there's been many in the last couple of weeks, and some multiple fires in a single day. So I want to obviously first thank our incredible firefighters in all of our districts and CAL FIRE for handling it so quickly, but also a big reminder, as Supervisor Spatier said, this is the time to have your defensible space completed. And as we move further into this month, your plans, if there's an emergency, and make sure everybody signed up for all the alerts. Go to LakeCoAlerts, and also firesafelake.org is the best resource, even though there's some updating that needs to happen there. I did go to Bacon Fest after I went to Middletown Days Parade, and it was incredible that that event is growing every single year, and it was awesome. Went to the Juneteenth Celebration. Supervisor Green was there as well. That was Monday, the 19th, at the Middletown Art Center, and that was a really wonderful event. Supervisor Crandall and I were invited to sit with Congressman Thompson this weekend at the Farm Bureau. They celebrated their 100 years and the Centennial Families, and gave out the scholarships, or I'm sorry, had the scholarship winners there, which are all women, by the way. And Lake County Ag is, without the women, you know, our ag industry wouldn't be what it is today. So there's a lot of stories about the women taking over the farms, the women going away to college and coming back and saving things, so it was really great to hear those stories. And then going into this week, tomorrow, we have the APGP kickoff, which is the grant, and I've got on Thursday, I'm not sure if I'll make the Redwood Regional Rise Meeting. It's monthly. We do have Hazard Tree Discussion, Community Resilience Center Planning Grant, and the Recreation JPA in the afternoon. And then Friday, we have a special governing board meeting. Are you going to be here for the workforce?
Oh, I didn't have that one on my calendar.
Yeah, there was something that needs to be signed. It's only supposed to be in half an hour.
I let them know that I'm not going to make that one.
Okay. So I'll do that from the courthouse here, and then go over to Riviera Heights, Conacta Fire Safety Council Meeting, as having a meeting with Congressman Thompson about insurance. And then be doing some Fourth of July events over the weekend. This is, this year is the 100th anniversary for the Cold Pool at Pine Grove, which is always where I'm at when there's a heat wave, so I'm happy to celebrate that. The Lions, Mountain Lions Club's having a pancake breakfast Sunday morning. There's a Fiddler's Jam, although I'm not going to make it. Monday, are you going to, are you on Monday or off Monday?
I was going to try to take Monday.
Well, maybe we could do a check-in call, either this Friday or Wednesday, we could schedule something. Or we could, maybe we could do it just a few minutes after Agenda Review on the 5th, maybe? We can talk about that.
Why don't we combine, let me try Friday, put you back in there.
Are you taking Friday off?
I was trying, but that's okay.
No, let's just do it on Wednesday, then. Let's just have a phone call on Wednesday.
I can move mine to Wednesday, too, if you need to, yeah.
Yeah, take some time off. The 5th is also the bi-weekly, bi-weekly local home hunting meeting. I'm going to be speaking at the Lake County Democrats, and then on the 6th, I am going on vacation, so I will be back for the meeting on the 18th. Well, I'll be back on the 17th. And that's, are we having the RRA meeting on the 17th?
Yes.
Is that one's going to be in Middletown?
It's going to be in Middletown at Station 60, and I will not be there.
Okay. All right. That's it for my updates. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, because someone mentioned about the defensible space and whatnot. I wanted to put something up, if I can be promoted, real quick. It's just, it's just announcing the chipping program and where the places are going to be. And so I just would like to do a visual, so people can see, rather than me just saying it, and people take, having to take notes, blah, blah, blah. So let's see, share screen, bam, there we go. Okay, so you can go to, where is it at? There we go. Clerk.co, Clerk Chipping Program. You'll find it on the website, once you go to clerk.co. But here, you could see it's already passed for Lakeport and Scotts Valley. The work will be done on the 29th and 30th. I'm not sure if you can still go on and fill out the paperwork, but it's worth a try. Lower Lake and Clear Lake would be July 14th plus 18th. Paperwork's due by the 7th. And then Soda Base, tentative, and Point Lake View 7, 28 plus, or July 28th and August 1st, paperwork's due by the 24th, and then Kelseyville, August 11th and August 15th, paperwork's due by the 7th. And so what you do is you click on this Sign Up Now and fill it out, or you email them if you need a hard copy or something of the like. What they do is they come, and it's the Hogback Ridge Crew, the Fuels Crew that comes and does this. They have a grant. They, once they get, it's a Community Wildfire Defense Grant, and whatever work they do, they can log it and get reimbursed. That way, they can do this work to provide defensible space for the community. They chip up to, I better stop. I won't say, because I don't want to mess it up, but you can find the information on here. There's actual pamphlet, and go onto this website, register, and get some chipping done. You just put it out in front of your home, or whatever the case may be, and they come chip it, and you're good to go.
Awesome, thanks. All right, so we will close our closed session, I mean, our open session and go-to-close session, 8.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B. What?
And Madam Chair, may I? We will be withdrawing item 8.3 for today.
Okay. Interviews for Public Health Officer, Appointment of Public Health Officer, 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. We will be polling, 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D1, FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project, and 8.4, Addendum, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D2, E1, One Potential Case. And we will take lunch and come back at 1:00 PM.